Good evening, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting on June 4th, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Let us start with the Pledge of Allegiance and if you'd remain standing for the invocation with Pastor Billy Zapla, Zapla, Thanksgiving Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, including the gifts that help us fulfill our callings and give us the ability to be involved in useful work throughout our homes and this great community. Thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in this great country, including the freedom to embrace and reject you. Lord, you remind us all that as citizens, we are to follow the lead of our governing authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, we pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular this assembled council, asking that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern these issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in understanding what is good and appropriate, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's an honest disagreement, personal peace and joy, knowing that when they leave this, this meeting, they've done the best they could. We pray for this agenda set before them today, and please give assurance on what would please you and would benefit those who live, work, in and around our beloved city of Bellevue. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Zapla. Susan, would you call to order?
Mr. Stinson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
And Ms. Welch?
Here.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item number five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports, 5A. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move this to item number seven, organizational matters. There are none this evening. Item number eight is special presentations, 8A. We have the first quarter update from the Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. Josh Charbot.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Yep, first, real quick, first quarter report, so it's January through March. I know we're getting to June, so we're starting to think about second quarter, but overall kind of on this first sheet that's up there, it's, I mean, the story to tell, it's been a slowdown. We had no single family housing, or we had no multifamily housing permits issued and a pretty good decline as far as single housing permits, but we think a lot of that's mostly just to the weather, nothing really to be too concerned to at this point, but overall, it's been a slower first quarter than we've seen previously, but we did have some pretty nasty weather to contend with. So then I'll jump over to this other sheet, just kind of talking about some of the projects we've seen over the first quarter across the county. We ended up responding to 11 total projects. We did have two landed projects, so that was going to be up in the city of Papillion with the project Wizard. J. Dunn is the general contractor out there, and they are, we're looking for some space to put eventually what's going to be all their office space for that project, and we helped them find a space in a warehouse up there that they're going to end up doing some tenant improvements to, and that's going to be worth about $1 million. It's out on 154th and Gold Coast Road. Additionally to that is the Black Hills Energy Office, so this was a project that's been open since about 2015, so Thrasher had some extra land up, out there in the western Sarpy County, and they ended up providing that land to Black Hills Energy, so that's going to be 40 retained jobs and 6.4 capital investment. We did have two local projects that we started, so one of them's a local cybersecurity employer, so this is actually an employer out of Springfield, Nebraska. They're just getting started, and they're looking for cybersecurity talent, so we've been helping them with some training funds. And then also, there's a local retailer, they're out of Omaha, but they own some land out on Highway 6 up in Gretna, and they're looking to potentially expand to another location out there, as well as do some industrial site development, so we've been working on that as well. For the other projects that we've seen from out of market, it's a lot of cold storage, we've seen a lot of those recently. A lot of those cold storage facilities are kind of looking more on the eastern side of Sarpy County, so we've been submitting a lot of Bellevue sites for that, and also manufacturing, we've seen a lot of different types of food processing, everything from baking to smoking meats to kind of taking big pieces of meat, making them into smaller pieces of meat, so no kill facilities as far as that goes, so that's kind of a quick rundown of the projects that we're seeing. The big thing I kind of want to mention here in Bellevue with the flooding, that kind of, that was kind of our big industrial quarter there, south of Offutt Air Force Base, so I think we had some sites that were kind of going to be our next jump looking forward, but we're starting to move those sites and submit those sites, and we actually did submit those for two projects over this, the second quarter that we can talk about here, not too long, but those are sites along Highway 75 and Fairview. There's about three sites up there that we think are real good sites, great access, great visibility. I believe they're already industrially zoned, so that should help there, and utilities are nearby, so right now we're working with all the utility companies to kind of get price estimates and capacities for that, so once we have all that, we'll be sure to share that. And I also did want to give a shout out to Epiphany Ramos has been exceptional at helping us find information, I know. We were kind of in a time crunch for one of the sites, and I called her up at nine o'clock, and she was ready with all the information, so a shout out to Epiphany. That's kind of a quick rundown as far as the project activity that we're seeing. I do also want to mention, we're having our VIP reception for all the city council member and all the elected officials here. That's going to be June, let me see our date, it's coming up June 20th at 5:30 at Embassy Suite, so if you haven't received your invite to that, please let us know if you would like more information. But that's just a real quick rundown of how the first quarter went. Like I said, with the weather, it was a little bit quieter than normal, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Josh? All right, thanks for coming on.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Item number nine, approved citizen communication, there are none. Item 10, liquor licenses, 10A, recommendation to approve manager application of Bonnie Johnson as manager of the Class D liquor license for Ball Inc., number nine, doing business as Tobacco Hut, number nine located at 4011 Harrison Street. Is Bonnie in the audience?
I'm here.
You have anything you want to say, or you're just here for questions?
Just here for questions, I guess, hopefully approval.
Okay, I'll open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against the manager application of Bonnie Johnson for Class D liquor license? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And does council have any questions, or want to make a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission and manager application of Bonnie Johnson as manager of the Class D liquor license for Bell Inc., number nine, doing business as Taco Hut, number nine, located at 4011 Harrison Street.
Second. Motion by Cook, seconded by Stinson, any questions? We have correction?
It's good.
All right. No questions. Motion by Cook, seconded by Stinson, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading, there are none. Number 12, ordinance for, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. 12A is ordinance number 3945, annexation of area number five. Jim, would you like to read that into the record?
Sure. Ordinance number 3945, a request to annex lots 67, 68, west 122.96 feet of lot 69, east 182.04 feet of lots 69, 70A, 70B, 71A, 71B, west 100 feet of north 175 feet of lots 72, 73, and south 122 feet of lots 72, 74, lot 75, and west half vacated 19th Street, east half vacated 19th Street, adjacent to lots 75, 76, 78, 88, 80B, 80C, 81, 82, 83, 84, south 85 of south 187 feet, lot 85, north 102 feet of south 187 feet of lot 85, north 110 foot of lots 85, 86A2, 86B, 86A1A, 86A1B, 87, lot 90, and south half vacated Kerry Street, 97, 98, east half of lots 99, 100A1, 100A2, 100A3, 100B, 100C, 103A, 103B, 106A, 106B, 107A, 107B, 108, 112, lot 113, and south half vacated Concord Street, lots 115 and north half vacated Kerry Street, 116B and 117, Child's East Estate Acres, lots 1 and 2, Child's Estate Acres replat 4, lots 86 and 87, Spring Creek, lot 1, Bohak Edition, lot 1, Schramm's Estate Acres, lot 1, and north half vacated Kerry Street and 2, Linden Ridge, lots 1 and 2, Amber Acres, lots 1 and 2, Crawford's Edition replat 1, lot 1, Hunter's Hollow, lots 1 through 3, Flojo Holbar Estates, lots 1 and 2, Duke's Edition, lots 1 and 2, Proxels Edition, lots 1 and 2, Timmerman Acres, south 41 feet of lot 1 and lot 2, Cassio's Thoroughbred Acres, lots 1, 5, 6, 7A, 7B, and 8 through 27, Caroline Edition, lot 1, Caroline Edition replat 1, lot 2, Rancho Estrella Tax Lot 3B, a regular part of tax lot 12 adjacent to lot 1, Bohak Edition, part of tax lots 12 and 13, regular 33 feet by 129, or 1,279 feet strip of tax lot 13A lying south of tax lot 3B, located in section 22, township 14, north range 13, east of the 6PM, and a regular easterly 665 feet of tax lots 12C and 14, except part taken for right of way, sections 15, T14N, R13E of the 6PM, and all of Budin County Road right of ways, and to provide for effective data disordnance applicant city of Bellevue.
Good job. I'm going to, I'm going to clarify one thing. I thought I heard Child's East Estate Acres, it should be Child's Estate Acres replat 4, so just for clarification. Okay, I'm going to remind the audience and kind of give them some ground rules on the public hearing that I'm going to open here in a second. Any member addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy 35 regarding conduct and decorum. Copies of this rule are posted outside council chambers. Speakers addressing the council will limit their comments to five minutes. This notice will apply to all public hearings tonight and will not be reread prior to each hearing. We do have a sign in sheet at the front table there, and then also at the podium, so if you're next in line, you can go ahead and sign the one on the table while you're waiting for the first one to finish, if that helps, and I will try to give you a 30 second warning if you're, if you're getting close to the five minutes, so. With that, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or against 12A ordinance number 3945, annexation of area number five? Please come forward.
I'd like to speak in for this, and I was notified by mail that this meeting was supposed to be a more information meeting, not a second hearing meeting. I didn't know this was a second hearing already.
State your name and address, please. Sorry, that was, that's for everybody tonight as well.
Okay. I'll grab that on the way by when I sit down.
Okay.
My name is David Aldaboric. I live at 8302 South 21st Street. I'm not in favor of this. I just got a new evaluation on my property just the other day, went up $14,000. Nebraska, our governor just said he don't want to rate, raise taxes, so every time you turn around, they want it, now they evaluate your property higher, so you've got to pay more taxes anyway. This, this thing with the taxes is getting out of, it's just getting out of proportion way too bad. I wouldn't feel so bad about it if everybody paid the same amount of taxes, and I have a little house. I'm not happy with getting annexed and having Papillion Sanitation pick up my garbage, and I called Ms. Welch about it a couple of weeks ago, and I asked her then, I said, I don't think this is legal. She said, and she said she'd check into it. I called, and they told me over at Papillion Sanitation that June 4th, they were going to start picking my garbage up. I said, well, they got to have three readings before they do anything. Didn't, didn't, didn't they didn't call you?
Yes, you did.
But you didn't get back with me.
You know, you're absolutely correct. I did remember seeing that note, and I checked with Public Works, because we talked about why is your garbage bill going to be on your MUD bill, and it's because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Roberts, it's because they are the collector of that, of that bill.
But their MUD, I don't.
And they are incorrect at Papillion Sanitation.
Okay, so MUD, I'm paying my gas and my water and my sewer use fee. Those are something that I do there at the house that I use. Property I owned was annexed in Bellevue. I had Premier sanitation for trash at one time. I didn't really like it. But all of the services stayed the same or got better, and that's what cities do. Eventually, every place around a city will be annexed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, the public hearing was closed. The third reading on this area number five will be this Thursday, June sixth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. Here in the council chambers. So moving to twelve B, ordinance number three-nine-four-six, annexation of area number seven. Jim, please read it into the record.
Ordinance number three-nine-four-six, a request to annex lots two, four, five, six, A-one, six, A-two, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve B, twelve C, thirteen, A-one, thirteen, B-one, fourteen, A, fifteen, A, fifteen, B, fifteen, C, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one, A. Old Orchard Place, Lot Three, Old Orchard Place, One, lots one and two, Old Orchard Place, Two, lots one through three, Old Orchard Place, Three, lots one and two, Old Orchard Place, Replat, One, lots four and five, High School View, lots one and two, Vasek Edition Lot, lots one and two, Vasek Second Edition Lot Fifty-nine, except Part Two Road, and Lot Sixty, except Part Two Road, Child's Estate Acres, tax lots eight, B-one, and twelve, A-one, located in Section Twenty-two, T-one-four-N, R-thirteen-E of the six P M, and lots, tax lots eleven through two, A, eleven, I'm sorry, it's eleven dash two, A, eleven dash two, B, and east fifteen feet of tax lots sixteen, A, located in Section Fifteen, T-fourteen-N, R-thirteen-E of the six P M, and all abutting county road right-ofways, and to provide for the effective dated disordinance applicant city of Bellevue.
Thank you. And I will open the public hearing for annexation area number seven. If there's anyone that'd like to speak regarding number seven, please come forward.
Is there a map of that area?
Uh can we pull one up? Yep, we'll get you one up there.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
That was the Greenbelt Lots, wasn't it?
It's there.
Thank you. That's, that's correct.
Okay, my name's Ralph Unstead. My wife asked me to read something to you, and then I got a couple of things to myself to say. This is what she, real, I ask you.
Can I get your address first, Ralph? Sorry.
Oh, twelve oh one Casper.
Thank you.
Sorry. I ask you to think about this. If you were to move to a new property and you were about to plant your flowers into a pre-existing flowerbed, and in the center of the garden was a very old and hardy vintage heritage rose, would you yank it out and kill it? To plant your new flowers, or would you plant your new plants around it and let it die in its own time, respecting how deep its roots were and how long it had survived so many years? Why are so many opposed to this annexation? Well, many have been planted here for generations. This was our land before Bellevue, surrounded us, and by no choice of ours. Sarpy County has been fine for us. The neighbors grew crops, milk cows, raised fruit in the orchards, bored horses, helped kids grow up in four H. I myself have been a four H leader and had many four H events on our acreage. This is very good and healthy for children. We've been privileged to seed more wildlife in our area as the city grew. The wildlife need places to be, not just in Fontanel Forest. We are a cer- certified wildlife habit, habitat with the National Wildlife Federation. And our son and environmental scientist has planted, planted a large patch of natural prairie on our acreage. Yes, we drive on some of the Bellevue streets, as do many others from outside of Bellevue. We do use Bellevue, Bellevue businesses too. But we would much rather pay a fee for a library card than to have our taxes raised considerably. What are you offering us? We've heard some of that, I guess. Uh we have no city water or sewer on our street. We are doing fine. We weren't asking the city for anything. Who's been asking? You want our money, I suspect. You want our land, and this is in the long-term plan. I believe someone took a look at our green areas with Realtor's eyes. Why not just leave us as we are? We will be gone before too long. We're both in our seventies. I look at you as individuals with your own backgrounds and opinions, but also as people with hearts. Some of us may offend you because they're so passionate about their homes and their lives that you may be threatening to take away. I believe you have this, the power in your voting finger to take a stand for what may not be logical or advantageous to the city. But for what may be right and good, in this case, not all about money. Sincerely, Laurel Unstead, Old Orchard Place, Acreage. My grandkids are the sixth generation on our property. P.S. There's some kind of grandfather clause or something that can be written to leave these green spaces alone for the next twenty, twenty-five years and let this run its course. That was my wife. Hope you listened to it carefully. This is what I say. It's a little different. The government is set up to preserve and protect the people. The people are the country. More freedom the people have to work, own property, to be individuals responsible for themselves and their families, the more responsible they become to each other and the areas where they live. We live in a country that has a government limited by a constitution, and that is what makes our country a miracle in this world, not an overreaching government. Thank you. Appreciate you listening.
Thank you. And we are not gonna be offended up here. I mean, we understand.
I know, I'm not up here to offend anybody.
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
As you're sitting down, I just wanna thank you. I see your hat, so I wanna thank you for your service in the military in Vietnam, also your service with the four H. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on area number seven?
My name's James Vasek. I live at eighty-seven oh one, South Thirteenth. I've got twenty acres out there. I was just wondering how this is gonna affect me. I've got cows, horses, chickens. I'm green belt. I farm a lot of that ground around there. I was just wondering how this, if I'm gonna go to the city, how's this gonna affect me with the cows?
Um there is no effect. You, you get, you'll use your, your land just like you're using it right now. The only difference will be your taxes are gonna be a little higher.
I can still have cows and stuff like that.
Zoning does not change. It's still permitted.
I didn't know that, 'cause when you talk about city, you know, they say you can't have this and can't have that, so.
No, that's correct, right? Mr. Chuchuk.
Really? Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
Maybe can we ex, can you explain or have Chris explain about the um ETJ? Is that, is that the right? Where there's the city and they, and the governing factors that they have, so that the people can understand that, please?
Sure. Uh the city has a planning and zoning jurisdiction two miles beyond our current city limits. So everybody in these annexation areas are al- already fall under our zoning regulations. Um nothing you're doing now will change with the annexation, again, because you already fall under those rules and regulations of our zoning. So um you are grandfathered or so to say, um nothing's gonna change as far as that's concerned.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on area number seven?
My name's Manuela Bundis, ninety-eighteen, South Thirteenth Street. And just like I said last time, uh I just, bottom line, I just don't wanna be annexed. I don't see any benefits, really. If any, hardly any. And I just see raised, you know, taxes being raised. You know, with, I'm not saying that we, you know, the way we are right now, it's fine. We don't really need anything extra. I'm not saying that we don't need anything from you guys, but it's just the, the way it is right now, it's fine with me. I just don't wanna pay more taxes. That's all, really.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in area number seven?
Hi, my name's Larry Kane, eight, nine, ten, South Thirteenth. Well, first of all, I'm retired and uh kinda on a fixed income. Where am I supposed to come up with the extra tax money? You know, I get a part-time job or whatever. Here's a little thing I thought of. Uh you said that uh you were trying to equalize the taxes. How about dropping the taxes on the people that are already in Bellevue and even them out that way instead of raising ours? You know, with that, that probably wouldn't work, I suppose. Another thing, I've watched a lot of council meetings. I've a lot, we've lived here since ninety-one. And I think in the past, I think they've squandered a lot of tax money on a lot of foolish things. Uh I'll give you a few examples, just the ones that I think about anyways, so. They did, I think they paid H D R seventy-five thousand dollars to do a study on the Fort Crook or Bellevue corridor coming in from Omaha off of Thirteenth. Well, you look down there now, all them, all that empty land down there where that trailer court used to be that they kicked those people out of. There was a play, a rental place down there. That's sitting there vacant. There's a few car lots that have moved in down there. Basically, it's just, I don't know what that seventy-five thousand dollars was for, other than to put restrictions on what could go in there. I, I, I just think that they haven't spent some of the money very wisely. Another thing was uh they spent eighty-five thousand dollars, I believe it was, to paint bike lanes on Fort Crook and other places. And in all the years since they've done that, I've never seen one single bicycle on, in those bike lanes. So I don't know how that was a, a good spend of the money, you know? Another thing is the softball village down there, the Bellevue. I don't know if, whatever happened with that deal where the management company took all the money and Bellevue left stock holding a bag without. But I just think that uh they, they could spend the money more wisely. You know, if you're gonna get my tax money, I would hope that you would spend it, you know, wisely. Uh another example was here a while back, that they had a deal on there where the police department needed fourteen video cameras, I believe it was the number. I'm not positive. I think it was fourteen, to do interviews. Why, why would, maybe it's justified, I don't know. Why would they need fourteen of them to do interviews? They have a big influx of crime over there, so. But anyway, that's about all I have to say. I guess I'll just uh leave you with a little tidbit. Lucy asked Charlie Brown, do all fairy tales start with once upon a time? And he answered, no. Some start with, if I'm elected, I promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on area number seven? Please come forward.
My name is Beverly Herdy, and I just have one question. At the planning commission meeting, they talked about uh taking all out of the annexation package, some of the green belt properties, and I notice now that they're back in. Is there any reason?
The planning commission gives a recommendation to the council, and then the council has elected to keep them in unless a council member removes those, so. That's what, that's what we'll be voting on Thursday.
So uh you, you decided to leave the, leave those green belt areas in?
Yeah, again, the count, the, the planning commission doesn't change anything for the council. The council still listens to the same um plans, and then they will elect to, to do what they choose with the recommendation account the planning commission has.
Thank you.
Can I get your address, please, Bev, for the record?
Uh one seven oh six Child's Road West.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on area number seven? Please come forward.
I'm James Lawrence. I live ninety-one, pardon me, ninety-one hundred, South Thirteenth. And I've got about four, four properties involved here on an acreage. Been here all my life. And my father and grandfather too. I know this is a done deal. I've wasted my time coming down here. I can tell you that right now. But I got a question for you. All these acreages, we live a little bit different than you do when you've got a house that's twenty foot next to you. We're on an acreage. We got squirrels, we got rabbits, we got raccoons. We got all different kinds of varmints and everything else. We take care of those varmints ourselves. The groundhogs, they'll destroy anything you can. Last year, I didn't have any ground, groundhogs. The year before, I took care of eight of them. The year before that, I took care of seven of them. I sent them to Groundhog Heaven. And now, and the raccoons, I got one the other day. He went to ground, or raccoon heaven. And I got three coming up the driveway. They will come into your garage. We understand that. It's not, nothing unusual for us because we live on an acreage. We got turkeys there, we got deer and everything else. But I wanna know, now that I can't shoot a gun when this Bellevue takes over, when I get a, get a raccoon in my trap or a skunk, who am I gonna call? One of you learned people should tell me, who do, who do I, who do I wanna call? I call Bellevue what? Tell me.
If there's a, uh, if there's a problem with Bellevue contracts with the Humane Society, which um that, that's part of the benefit. You can call the Humane Society and.
And they're gonna come over and get the raccoon and the skunks?
If they're causing a problem, an issue, that's what we contract for, correct?
Is, I'd, I'd like to see a copy of that contract. I actually would, because I wanna see one of these guys come and get a skunk out of the trap.
You might have to live trap it.
I do live trap them until I get a hold of them. But you know, uh you, you can't believe this. I had a raccoon crawl down the chimney in one of my rentals. And we heard him in the chimney. All of a sudden, he was gone. He crawled right up the side of the corner of the building and down the chimney. These raccoons will destroy anything everywhere. So I take care of them. And when you're on an acreage, you do that. That's normal. That's what we do. But when the Bellevue says, you can't shoot a gun and kill anything on your property, I wanna know why. And call Humane Society? I'm gonna tell them, I got raccoons and I got skunks on my property. I, I'm, I'm on an acreage. Wants you to come out and put, put your traps in here. Are you gonna do that? Is that what Bellevue's gonna do? Or is that what you're paying for? Somebody ought to know here. Mr. Chuchuk, you know everything. I've already been involved with you many times. Tell me what?
Thanks. I, I don't know the details of our contract, but.
You can still get rid of your varmints. You can live trap them and take them somewhere else.
And take them where? Should I bring them to your house?
Sure.
Should I bring here and put them out here in the street? Tell me, I'll do that.
Is there a uh?
I'll put them in the street here. Just give me your address. I'll drop them off at your house. I probably have one. I got a trap set tonight. Probably have one in the morning, 'cause they love tomatoes.
Mr. Mayor?
Anybody want, want a raccoon in your yard?
Councilwoman Welch?
I had a raccoon in my house.
Okay, there you go.
Okay. I called the police department.
Okay.
They came out and looked at it. They came out and looked at it, assessed it. They called the Humane Society. They took care of the raccoon. It's just the protocol that you do.
In my yard? In my yard? In my driveway?
Part of it is, you can contact the Humane Society to see what they'll do, and then there's also um, what's the, the critter control is another company that does some things.
And the city's gonna pay for all that?
The, the critter control will charge you for it, but I, I don't want to get carried away too much. You got about thirty seconds left, so is there any other points?
No, I'm done. That's, I, I've already made my speech at the last planning board meeting. And uh, as far as, I know this is a, this is a done deal. I know that. But uh, we're on acreages there. This is not houses twenty feet apart. So you gotta remember, we think a whole lot different than a normal subdivision. Okay, thank you for your time.
All right. And I reiterate that we uh, we are listening to everybody that comes up here, and I know there's council members meeting other council members, and they'll do that all the way up till Thursday, so um, just reassure that. Come, come forward, please, to the mic. Restate your name, please.
Manuela Bunes, I was here all, just, you know, just a comment, I, you know, just like he said, I think it's you guys on your side. It's, it's a done deal, but wouldn't be, you know, would be good or nice if you guys would probably get a vote from all of us if you're trying to annex, or maybe, you know, send letters or whoever signs to get in, you know, do it that way, not just you, you guys decide to do it. You know, say there's, I, I thought I saw somewhere you guys are trying to do like seven hundred people. So say you get fifty percent or more, then you do it. How about, you know, how about doing something like that? And not just you guys decide what to do.
We're, we're doing what, uh, again, we're representing the city of Bellevue. We've got fifty-five thousand residents in the city of Bellevue that this group represents. We have to do what's right for them, what's right for the city of Bellevue, and the growth going forward.
So why are we here then? I mean, in reality, is this a waste of time for everyone, or?
I wouldn't call it a waste of time. You get a, you get to talk to us.
I know, but so, you know, how, how is this process? Are you guys just, you know, we're here, we talk, and you guys just, you know, and it's just here, then, because last time I was here, you know, you, you're here, and then you guys vote, you know, to do it. And then, you know, so I mean, if you guys are gonna do it, why even make these meetings, really? You know, like I said, you guys should do it, you know, what, you know, if, if the people want to get in, or you know, make it, you know, fifty percent or more or something, and then you do it. Otherwise, if you're gonna do it anyways, yeah, I really, I, I don't know. I just don't really, I don't really know what the process is.
I would say if your taxes are a little bit lower, that a hundred percent of the people are not gonna do it. So.
Say that again, please?
I would say if your taxes, a person's taxes are gonna stay lower, a hundred percent of those people are not gonna do it. But I can tell you, we're listening to you. We're listening for good arguments on it. And if there's any one of us up here that's not listening, raise your hand, because I know we all are.
I know you're listening, but you know, like, you know, last time, you know, everybody, I think everyone, we were, they were here, I don't know how many people, but just as much, and we all were opposed to it, you know, we don't want to get annexed. And then, you know, you guys did a vote, and, and then you guys say, okay, we approved it, so I don't really see it, but the point is. And I know, I know there's other people that don't show up, because they probably just feel, you know, you know, why even go? It's, they're gonna do it anyways. You know, we're just here, you know, just to make our voice, that's all, really.
For one thing, it's law. We have to have three readings on it, so.
Okay, yeah, that's what I think, just, you know, doing it by law, yeah. So anyways, thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Podrowski, and I live at eight, nine, one, four, South Thirteenth Street. Uh, I do oppose this annexation. Um, I mean, I don't think we much have much of a choice, but my question is, uh, when we get annexed in, and they decide to put in new streets or sewers, are we gonna get charged assessments against our property for the footage of our property? I mean, our roads right now are fine. There's nothing wrong with them, but I'm just concerned if the city decides later on, oh, we need to put streets and sewers. I mean, because I know there's, they've, I've seen, I used to work for Douglas County, and I've seen them put assessments against properties.
Um, I'll let uh, our Public Works, or Jeff or Chris answer, but if I'm, if I'm incorrect, but um, when you're annexed into the city, you're gonna get put into that capital improvement plan, so we're gonna put the projects on our plan over the next one year, five years, ten years, twenty years. And eventually, hopefully, those streets, they, they get into that plan, they get improved over time. It's not gonna be done tomorrow. Now, I would say if an area has a huge uh, streets start caving in or something, uh, there could possibly be a paving district. Um, but I'll, I'll let Jeff get into that. Mister Roberts.
Well, we do have the ability to create paving districts where you would do special assessments. But as of, for, you know, for as long as I've been here, we've never done that to anybody. I'm guessing if it's just a street maintenance or something like that, then yeah, the city will come in and take care of it, patch it, do whatever. As far as tearing out what you've got in and putting all brand-new curved, curved-out streets with storm sewer and all that, we're probably not gonna do that for many, many years.
Because I mean, it can cost a lot of money. I mean, I've seen it run ten, twenty thousand dollars. And I don't want, I mean, a lot of these people, you all know our taxes are gonna go up as it is. I don't want to get charged another ten to twenty thousand, because I know they go according to the footage of your property. Right?
Correct, yeah. And yeah, we're, uh, the city's not under any obligation to go in and rip out anybody's streets and change them, and then you know, there's no need to do it.
But if the streets start getting bad, then they're gonna, we're gonna get charged.
Like I said, we've never done it before. When we've done street work, where we put in new streets, the city's always footed the bill for it. We've never assessed any property.
I've seen Douglas County do it, because I used to work for the treasurer's office over there.
Cities do do that. Douglas County, Omaha, yeah, I know they've done it at times, but we never have here.
Okay, but I mean, you can't say for sure, though.
No, nothing's a hundred percent guaranteed, but we have no plans on doing it.
Yeah, because I mean, I know they said you have fifty days to pay it. I mean, who's got ten thousand dollars to pay that in fifty?
Well, actually, I think you have seven years to pay it off.
With interest?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and the interest is pretty high, ten to twelve percent, if not higher than that.
I couldn't tell you what it is.
Yeah, I know it's pretty high. So that's what my concern is. I mean, I'm worried about the taxes, because I know my taxes are gonna go up in additional twelve hundred for the year, because my SS value went up twenty-six thousand. Plus with the levy going up, from what it is, it's gonna have a pretty increase. But I'm more worried about special assessments. I don't want to get a ten to twenty thousand dollar.
Right, and you also brought up the storm sewer, you, sanitary, uh-
Septic tanks?
Septic tanks and all that, that if you have a septic now and it works fine, you can keep it in the future. If you can repair the septic, or you have the land to do it, you got the right kind of soil, you can keep your septic. We're not gonna force anybody to hook up uh, to a sanitary line unless they're within a certain distance of an existing line now.
Okay, but then we have to pay for that too, though.
That would be on the homeowners.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, I just want to let you know, I do oppose, but, you know, I just don't want no ten to twenty thousand dollar special assessment coming against me either.
There is no plans and no talk whatsoever of that, so. That's all I can tell you.
Okay.
Okay, we're still on area number seven. If anybody would like to speak regarding that area, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Linda Hagman Lee, ten twelve Casper Street. And there are eleven acres on the land. I'm trustee for my parents. My parents own the property, and they're now deceased. And we've used that uh, land for um, horses. So that's kind of the background. I, I'd like to talk more about the people. I know you're sitting there very nicely, listen, uh, hearing. Uh, maybe you're listening, but you're not hearing what we say. And just maybe looking at the people in this area. If you look at the map, we're mostly agriculture. And you are set up for the city. You're set up for developments and, and little lots and we have trees that come down. You know how many trees I have and how much brush I have? My garbage works well now. I can get, you know, I get out there and I chop it up into little sticks and get them in my trash can. They take it away, but it's a lot of work to live on an acreage or eleven acres than on a place in town where you can mow your little lot and you don't have huge lots to mow and and you have no concept of the work that it takes to live on an acreage or a large piece of land. My neighbors do. My neighbors are upset about taxes because those houses they've lived in, they're paid for. So when the city people get a raise in taxes or assessment, by the way, my assessment's fifty-five thousand up. So it's going to make an effect, but when somebody has a loan, then they just put parcel out over twelve months and their payment goes up. But when we get taxes go up, we have to pay it in a lump sum. And people are retired out here. They don't have the money to do that. They're going to have to borrow the money. This is a hardship. It truly is. I, I don't think that if you're living in a city, you comprehend what a hardship it is. You know? Secondly, improvements. It would cost ninety thousand dollars for me to go into the water, which is at the corner of Casper and Thirteenth, because we've looked into it. So we have our well water. You know, ninety thousand dollars, a lot of money. To run a line all the way down is probably, what, two blocks down there at the corner of the high school? So I'd love to have you come out and put water in and, and I, you know, I, I'd like that and have sewage come in and be able to take care of my property really well, but you know, it just uh, doesn't work. It just doesn't, doesn't work, and I think that's um, hi, I, and, oh yes. The land again. Look how much is agriculture. Mister Vasek farms a lot of land. The land across the street is farmed. It's more than half agricultural area. And that just, that all goes by different rules than the city does. And thank you.
Thank you. And I, actually, I think that land across the street, if you're where I'm thinking you are, it's a, they grow corn or beans on it? It's like ten acres?
It is thirteen acres. Hassel owns it.
Because I was, yeah, I was surprised that they don't have green belt on there. They've never applied for it.
I am too, and in fact, I talked to them, because I finally contacted them. Mister Vasek's stepdaughter, um, flowers add up every spring and every year. And she plants, what, soybeans? On it? So that's farmed and
Yep.
It just, that land just does not fit your specification for the city yet. It will someday, but it's just not there yet.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on area number seven? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Um, any additional questions from the council? Comments? The third reading on area number seven will be this Thursday, June sixth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M here in the council chambers. Moving to item twelve C, ordinance number three nine four seven, annexation of area number eight. Jim, please read it into the record.
Ordinance number three nine four seven, a request to annex lots one, two, three, eleven, and twelve. Dvorsky's Industrial Subdivision, lots one and two. Dvorsky's Industrial Sub, replat one, lots one and two. T and L addition, the southeast corner of tax lot four, located in section twelve. T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six P M. Tax lot K, part of the tax lot J, tax lot Z, located in section six. T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six P M. Tax lot twenty-six and part of tax lot twenty-eight adjacent, located in sections one, section one. T thirteen N, R thirteen D of the six per, P M, and all abutting county road right-of-ways. And to provide for the effective date of this ordinance, applicant city of Bellevue.
Thank you. I will open up the public hearing for area number eight. If there's anyone wishing to speak on number eight, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Patrick Sullivan with Adam and Sullivan Law Firm, twelve forty-six Golden Gate Drive in Papillion. Uh, I represent the Cuba family, uh, Bob Cuba, who's owned this farm for quite some time. And it's down in your lower left corner, uh, highlighted in blue. Um, it's approximately ninety-three acres. Um, Bob, uh, recently passed away a couple of years ago, and the children now own uh, this farm. Um, in your packet, and I know that I inundated you with that, uh, not only electronically, but I dropped off copies, and I have copies for you again today. Uh, but I would just like to walk through that packet for a moment. And uh, if you'd look on page one of that packet and page two, um, this property sits right on uh, that angle that you could see that goes uh, from southeast to northwest. Right below that is the runway, uh, and then the runway runs north and south along that uh, other piece there. So this is kind of sitting right up into the uh, inside uh, angle of the two runways. That property, because of where it's located, has, is in within the A Qs. Uh, the A Qs is a rating system, not only for crash areas on both ends, but also for uh, decibel ratings, uh, for each uh, property that's located along the sides of it as well. Um, this property is about eighty percent covered by either eighty decibel, seventy-five decibel, or seventy decibel area, uh, which is illustrated on pages one and two. Um, when you go to get a building permit for this property, um, you have to go through this A Q's uh, application process, which includes being uh, notifying the base engineer, and the base engineer then also makes comments on it. Based upon where this property is located, it is essentially surrounded either by the base or very high-density housing. The only likelihood of anything that could go in that area then and be compatible would also be uh, some type of housing. The difficulty with the housing in the A Q's area, and, and as illustrated, I believe, on page uh, four, is if you look at all of those areas, they have footnotes that either say, you can't build anything, so seventy-five to eighty and eighty plus, you can't build any housing in that area. Um, and then if you go into the seventy, seventy-five, and sixty-five, seventy, which is only about thirty percent of the property, it has footnotes on it. Those footnotes are then carried over, I believe on page six, um, in which there are very high uh, degrees of insulation and otherwise that you have to reduce the decibel rating to. Uh, that's under footnote twenty-five, thirty, or thirty-five. And then uh, on note eleven, as you read that, they say they strongly discourage uh, any housing residential use in that area. And an evaluation should be conducted prior to approvals, indicating that a demonstrated community need for residential use would not be met if development were prohibited in these zones, and there are no viable alternative locations. I've experienced dealing with the A Qs a number of times in, in a area that is not nearly as impacted as this area by the A Qs. And the engineer has essentially sent letters to the city of Bellevue that has said, we don't want anything there that's residential. We, and we would just as soon not have any buildings in that area as well. So the issue and the problem that we have is that this property truly is a farm. It's rural in nature. Uh, the only thing that on it, eh, on it is a farm building, a dilapidated house that was built prior to the A Q's zoning. Nobody lives on this farm. I don't think anybody would want to live uh, on this farm. Uh, and it'll continue to be rural in nature. They put beans on it one year, they put corn uh, the other year. Um, so aside from these smaller parcels, uh, that are, have- Um, so aside from these smaller parcels, uh, that are have green belt. This is actually a large farm, uh, that will be nothing ever than a farm. In fact, I think if you look, if the A Qs could have been put in prior to some of the development of Bellevue. We would have seen other areas in that corner that would not have had housing either. Uh, but they certainly aren't going to allow any future housing. I also note in the packet, and I believe it's your second to last page.
Pat, if you can try to wrap it up in just next thirty seconds or so, I think the council will ask you questions too.
Yep. Uh, if you'll look under your comprehensive plan, you have areas, uh, legend of annexation, uh, potential priority. Um, if you look, uh, there's low, medium and high. In your comprehensive plan, there is no indication to annex this property at all. And then the final page, this property actually was annexed back in two thousand three. I gave a similar presentation back in two thousand three of the circumstances, uh, with this property. And council at that time reversed their decision and detached the property and did not include it within the city limits. Cause truly it was rural in character and would continue to be so. And I don't, that's it.
Any questions for Mister Sullivan? Councilwoman Welch.
So Mister Sullivan, um, did you mention that this property is at the end of the runway at Offutt? Is that correct?
It's at the, where the crux of the runway, runway runs north and south. And then kind of an angle, uh, north, from the northwest to the southeast. So it would be like this. Like, well, right there, it'd be like this and the property sits right here.
Okay, so with the flooding that happened on the runway over by the, um. Harland Lewis, do I have it right?
It's behind Paradise Lakes, so.
Okay, with the flooding that happened there. And the budget from the government that they're talking about with repairs and that kind of stuff, is there any indicator that Offutt may purchase this property?
We've had no indication to that point, no. And just to give you an idea of how close this is to those two runways. Bob was down there fixing fence and he had M P show up with machine guns next to him, asking him what he was doing. I mean, it literally sits right up against the runways.
Question for, uh, Chris Schuchak. Back when Paradise Lakes was approved, is this A Q's the same back then as it is now, or has that changed?
I believe it's the same, um.
Sorry, I should have asked you that beforehand.
I'm, I'm trying to think, I, Paradise Park was approved about the time I started with the city. Uh, just before that, and I think the A Q's ordinance was in effect at that time.
So it wouldn't be a whole lot different than that, cause I know, right, in your opinion, or? A lot of it's fairly similar? That's my question is, there's a couple of different purchasers out there that are interested in the, in the Paradise Lakes area, so.
Eh, eh, if you let me address that, if I could go over to the screen.
Did you, actually, did you represent Paradise back then, or?
So that A Q's goes like this, okay? And it gets lower decimal as you go this way. Paradise Park's down here, so when you get down here, the A Q's is much, uh. Uh, lower, uh, concentration than it is here. Right, so this comes across like this, so the lines go like this. And they're captured by the sixty-five. Our sixty-five runs right here. So they're, they are further removed.
And, and I, eh, eh, and I just, Mister Schuchak could probably advise. If we send this to city engineers and say we want to put homes in here, the reaction that we would get from the city, from the base engineer.
They, they would probably discourage it.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the map that you had and it looks like the lines of decimals is the same as Paradise Lakes. So I'll have to look at that a little closer. So if we want to make a note of that and talk about that later. Um, any other questions for Mister Sullivan?
I do have one more question. This annexation potential plan that you gave us, when was this created?
Believe it was created in the last time the comprehensive plan was done and that was two thousand eleven. Is that correct, two thousand eleven?
How often do those plans change?
Well, prior to that, it'd been a long time since, um, we had updated the comp plan. We'll, we'll probably look at doing it once we get census information again and, um. You know, have a, a better idea of the population of the city and the services that are needed with the city.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one more for Mister Schuchak, I guess. What if a person, just trying to get a hold of, what if a person want to put like six fifteen acre lots in there? Is that a possibility in there?
Can I get back to you? There, there's, I, I don't know, all the, uh, there, there are some density, um, provisions within the footnote.
I don't want to play you on the spot. You can answer that. Just get it back to the council members tomorrow morning if you could.
I, I guess I would finally mention if Paradise Park were to rebuild or asked to rebuild today and get that zoning. Base engineering would highly discourage it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on area number eight? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Matt Ramsey. I live at eight two two Bordeaux Avenue. And, uh. Prepared remarks, it's more to keep me on point than anything, so. Uh, we'll start with what is a city? In Village of Niobrara versus Tishy, the United, the Nebraska Supreme Court's opinion states. The legal as well as a popular idea of a municipal corporation in this country, both by name and by use, is that of oneness? A collective body, that is a body of people collected or gathered together in one mass, not separated into distinct masses. And having a community of interest because residents of the same place. So as to a territorial extent, the idea of a city is one of unity, not of plurality, of compactness or continuity. Not separation or segregation. Contiguity is generally required even the absence of statutory requirements to that effect. Now, cities of the first class are given authority under chapter sixteen of the Nebraska revived statutes. And specifically Nebraska revived statute sixteen dash one seventeen, to extend our city limits, subject to certain limitations. Sixteen one seventeen, section one states, the mayor and city council of the city of the first class made by ordinance at any time include within the corporate limits of such city. Any contiguous or adjacent lands. And also statute one sixteen one eighteen states. Lands, tracks, streets and highways shall be deemed contiguous although a stream, embankment strip, a parcel of land not more than two hundred feet wide. Lies between the same and the corporate limits. So if you scroll down on the map here. Um, so when I look at the map for the annexation of areas eight and nine, the property annexed by Bellevue in two thousand eight seems to be a flag without a pole. It is not contiguous to the previous Bellevue city limits and the gap between these two areas exceeds two hundred feet. If challenged, this annexation was most likely be nullified. Now going back to the court's definition of what a city is, we see that Bellevue is no longer a unified municipality either, but rather one of plurality. We now have Bellevue and other Bellevue. As such, any attempt to annex lands that are solely contiguous to other Bellevue, which is at the bottom of this map, would be an act of plurality. It would not be an extension of the main body of Bellevue. As such, any attack on the annexation ordinance that is solely contiguous to other Bellevue will also challenge the legal effect of the two thousand eight ordinance. In addition, looking at tax lot K, partial tax lot J. That's that little blue horizontal rectangle that's out there all by itself. It occurred on this map that this section is not contiguous to any part of Bellevue. Usually when a municipality tries to do a strip or flagpole annexation, they make sure that at least one small portion of the land is connected to the corporate limits of the city. When challenged, these annexations are regularly nullified by the courts as they fail the contiguous test. As stated in Sarpy V Papillion, the powers delegated to municipal corporations to annex territory. Must be exercised in strict accord with the statute conferring it. In conclusion, I am opposed to any annexation that is not contiguous to the main body of Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn that over to our attorney Bree, um, but I can, and this is, uh, going off past memory, but. When they annexed that area to the south, um, it, it stood the time to challenge from what I understand. And, uh, there was no challenge on it, so I'm assuming that.
Much of that is owned by the city of Bellevue, is it not?
Pardon me?
Much of that land is owned by the city of Bellevue?
Yeah, some of it.
And then the rest of it, a large majority of it seems to be owned by Bellevue Future Development LLC, somewhere out of Utah.
It's a, it's a separate, a private entity. It's not Bellevue. It has nothing to do with the city of Bellevue. Uh, they annexed that to bring it, I believe to put the baseball, World Baseball Village in there for, for financing.
So it's owned by the corporation that was working with Bellevue to develop the baseball softball complex?
I don't know if it's the same corporation or a separate one, so I, I don't know that answer.
I, I don't see where they'd have any interest in opposing the annexation.
Uh, the county attorney, I'm gonna turn it over to Bree, so.
The county attorney could have opposed that and brought a suit against the city if the city didn't want to sue itself in that situation. Um, but since that wasn't challenged, that isn't effective annexation. Additionally, I would direct you to sixteen dash one thirty, which is the. Um, correct statute. It's not sixteen dash one one seven. Um, so I would just direct your attention to that. We will review any of your concerns and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions from council tomorrow prior to the vote. Um, but as far as the two, two thousand eight annexation, uh, that is effective and any annexations presented today. And voted on on Thursday have already been looked at and they're contiguous and adjacent.
And I, I guess I'd like to add that, that space in between is the, the airbase, um, Offutt Air Force Base. And the city does have the power to annex the base, but I believe we're, there was a, uh, being a good neighbor type situation back then. And, and we opposed to go this route, which was never challenged.
Okay, well, if you look at sixteen one thirty, section two. It still requires that annexations be of contiguous and adjacent lands.
That's correct, sir, and since there was no challenge in the two thousand eight one, it's an effective annexation. And these annexations are adjacent and contiguous.
Tax lot K, partial tax lot J. The little horizontal rectangle out by its lonesome. Also owned by the city of Bellevue, therefore there'd be no objection to it by the city, however, you are still bound by state statute.
Yeah, I, I don't know which parcel you're talking about are planning.
This black line is the demarcation line of Bellevue city limits here. Base, other Bellevue. This is the one that I'm referring to right here. My question is, how is this contiguous and adjacent to Bellevue?
I guess I don't understand your question, how it's not. It's touching the border of Bellevue. Uh, it's something that we'll review. I mean, we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I will look at that in more detail. Uh, look at that specific lot and the boundaries and I'll have a conversation with council. Um, but to me, just looking at it, it looks like it's.
If you bring up the Sarpy G I S map, you'll see that it's not. Also recommend you review, um, Sarpy versus Papillion with respect to strip and five pole annexations. And that's all I have unless there's any other questions at this time.
Uh, thank you very much. Is that the, uh, police shooting ground? Uh, Bree will review that. Any other question or any other, uh, speakers for area number eight? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing for number eight. Uh, the third reading for area number eight will be this Thursday, June sixth, two thousand nineteen at six P M here in the council chambers. Move on to twelve D, ordinance number three nine four eight, annexation of area number nine. Jim, please read into the record.
Ordinance number three nine four eight, a request to annex lot ten A, east of relocated Mopack Railroad and south of Dr- Drainers Ditch. Part of lot ten A, west of relocated Mopack Railroad and south of Drainers Ditch. Part of lot ten B, south and west of Drainers Ditch, Palm Tag subdivision. Abandoned railroad right of way adjacent and lot five and part of lot six, part of lot seven. And Vacated Street adjacent, lots five, six and seven. Butterfield subdivision, tax lot E in northwest one quarter, located in section eleven. T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six P M. Tax lots one and two A and part of tax lot two, tax lot six. East of railroad and abandoned part, abandoned railroad, parcel number zero one zero six one four two three O. Tax lot two B, part of tax lot six and part of tax lot one. Regular westerly, seven twenty-four point six seven feet of tax lot eleven. Except right of way in northwest one quarter. Tax lot eleven, except west, I've won fifty-one point four two acres and accept. Road right of way, regular tract in northwest corner of tax lot twelve. Except right of way, southwest one quarter, tax lot twelve, except right of way. And tract in northwest corner and easterly track, all in south one half. A regular easterly, a hundred and forty-eight feet of tax lot twelve in southeast one quarter, located in section fourteen. Two thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six P M. And all abutting county road right of ways and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance applicant city of Bellevue.
Thank you. I'll open, uh, area number nine up for a public hearing. If you're here to speak, uh, for or against, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Philip Eason, uh, Philip with one L. Um, I'm the general manager for the Darling Ingredients Bellevue facility. And, uh, uh. As an employee of Darling, we have some, uh, have some questions about the annexation. Almost all of the property to be annexed in this section is Darling property. Um, we're not exactly, uh, clear on why this property would be annexed into the city. We have approximately two hundred and twenty-one acres of farm ground, a hundred and sixty acres of that is tillable a lot. Uh, there's a small acreage on it and the rest is. Uh, what do I want to say?
Agricultural?
No, it's not agriculture. It's, uh, wetlands. I'm sorry. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. The, the rest of that is wetlands. So, uh, before I go any farther, I want to thank you for the opportunity to, to come and visit about this with you guys, share a few of our ideas. I also want to really tell you, I really appreciate you carrying on the tradition of the pledge of allegiance. And an opening prayer before the committee. I think that's very, very valuable part of our history. So I appreciate you all doing that. Again, as I mentioned, two hundred and twenty-one acres of that property to be annexed is farm ground. Um, our, our industry is actually a agricultural industry. Uh, earlier someone in the, uh, one of you mentioned, uh, recycling. And, uh, the projects and the aggressiveness about recycling that Bellevue. Um, has done and, and other people are looking at us. There's a book written about our industry and the name of the book is The Original Recyclers. So our industry is a very, very valuable part of the recycling industry. Um, we don't understand, uh, and I would question how this would be beneficial to Darling. Uh, as far as, uh, the annexation, what that would bring us, um. Our utilities are through City of Omaha, M U D, O P B D. And Cornerstone Energy, uh, I seriously doubt if our trash pickup will drop to thirteen dollars. Sure can understand. Oh, I wanted to, I wanted to interject that, I wanted to thank the county assessor for adding the equity to my home that he did here recently. So, I'm sure you probably never thought you, I thought you'd hear that angle. But I'd like to read to you, um, some representatives from Darling has com- composed a letter, um, to the planning department. Uh, I was able to visit with Mr. Schuchuck briefly, um. We were a little late on getting notification, part of that was, uh, our company's fault. But it was a short notice, I didn't have a lot of time to prepare things here, but, uh. One of the things that we visited about was the special green belt valuation and I was informed that. We would lose that on our farm property, which is gonna be a huge, huge jump in our, our tax liabilities. Uh, I think in the rest of the property that we own will probably be a huge increase in our tax liability. But I wa- I'd like to read you one paragraph from the letter we composed and sent to the planning, uh, department. Just today, um, and then includes this, Darling objects to propose zonization. Of its plant and property on the following grounds, number one. The annexation is improper due to an improper purpose, number two. Some or all of the land owned by Darling is agriculture, agricultural and is not urban or suburban in character. Number three, the annexation violates the requirement under Nebraska law. That the annexation be continuous or adjacent. And number four, Darling is concerned the gravel roads next to Darling's plant. Which require weekly grading in order to be maintained, may not be adequately maintained if the city of Bellevue takes over the roads. I guess I would ask the question, does the city of Bellevue own a road grader?
Uh, we do not own a road grader, um, and I can have, uh, Mr. Roberts, let's address, go ahead and finish your.
I guess the question I would add to that is how do you, how are you going to maintain a gravel road? With heavy truck traffic when you don't even own a, a maintainer?
I'm gonna guess, but if I'm wrong, um, we have a lot of, uh, situations around the city where we will swap county responsibilities. So we'll pick up some.
So the county will still maintain that road?
Maybe, it's a possibility.
It's possible, we can make arrangements for them to do that with their grader. And then we just swap services with them for someplace else.
What advantage is it to the city to annex that property? This is not, uh, residential property. This is not, uh, urban property, this is farm ground. And it will remain farm ground as long, as long as Darling owns it, which will be a long time. So I don't see an advantage to the city of Bellevue, I don't see any advantage whatsoever to Darling Ingredients. And I don't understand why you wanna annex a, an area where. I would say over eighty percent of that property belongs to one, one entity. I would entertain some questions, I'll do my best to answer them. And there are some other people here from Darling that may be able to answer those questions better than I.
Okay, um, I'll start off, um, the answer to why would the city wanna do it? Uh, you've sat through all these other annexations here, um, that's kinda filling in the holes, it's building our foundation as a city. The other part of, uh, annexation is for the proper growth of Bellevue. You've also heard, uh, uh, we need to be contiguous in our growth, um, we can't jump over Darling. So, your, your property does sit right in the middle of growth, uh, we've got the, uh, Kennedy Freeway, Highway thirty-four. Interchange that is a huge part of Bellevue's future and we wanna make sure that is set up correctly. Uh, you have a subdivision right south of you, there's some industrial, some apartments, some houses, it's definitely ready for annexation.
So, so how can you annex that when there's no property adjacent to ours?
Uh, there is.
No, there isn't.
It's within the two hundred foot, uh, rubber, rubber tracks, I believe. I'll, I'll turn that one over to Mr. Schuchuck.
Actually, part of your property actually is adjacent to the city property, to city, current city limits on the east side there. Um, then, we also, your, your bigger parcels, once we, if we annex where the plant is. We get the county road as well, so the county road would then be actually right adjacent to your.
There is property between the city property and Darling property. It's owned by the Papio Creek Development. There is also property there owned by Sarpy County on the north side. And there is property owned by the United States government on the northeast corner, that is between city property and Darling property.
Not, not, are you confusing city property with city limits? You, you are.
Well, that's what I mean, city limits. There is property that's not in the city limits that belongs to the Papio Creek. Uh, and the, uh, I think it's Corps of Engineers that own that property. And I don't believe that is within the city limits of Bellevue.
There is property within the city limits of Bellevue that is adjacent to your property.
Where at?
You see that long, narrow sliver there? That is adjacent to the city limits.
That little, the long piece of, that Darling owns? Where, where does the city limits at? That line is incorrect.
The black line?
The black line is incorrect, the second one. There's no property there. Where the line, where the gap is, is where the Papio Creek owns and, uh, Corps of Engineers and the city does not. There's no property that is part of the city limits, there's no property between the Papio Creek property and the Darling property. So it can't be part of the city limits.
Look in the map, it is. It doesn't matter who owns it, it's in the city limits.
Either Papio Creek owns it, or Darling owns it. And Papio Creek on your map is excluded.
So are you, are you suggesting we cannot jump a creek owned by, uh, the N R D?
That's my question.
It, it's our.
I'm just, I'm just making that argument because I know that the, the city limits does not run adjacent to the Darling International, or Darling Ingredients property. I believe the map is incorrect.
So you're saying that little tiny area that's got the black hatches around?
Yeah, where you stuck the black line in there.
The city doesn't own that?
City doesn't own it, it's owned by Papio Creek.
It's not in, it's not in the city limits, though.
You tell me.
It is.
Who owns it?
Doesn't matter who owns it.
There's nothing there, is what I'm saying, there's no property there that is not owned by Darling or the Papio Creek District.
It doesn't matter if it's owned by the N R D, it's still in the city limits.
Then why isn't the, the, where's there a gap between it? Where the city limits is not. And you just have a line, well, how long is that, how wide is that line? Four foot, six foot?
We have an area where we can slide over that.
You can look on the county S I P map also.
So when, the way I'm looking at that, so when this last annexation took place, that small parcel, and again, it doesn't matter who owns it. Was annexed into the city, is that correct, Mr. Schuchuck?
Yes.
Who goes on that?
I believe it's the N R D.
The United States owns a portion of it.
So that's part of Offutt Air Force Base?
Papio, Missouri owns part of it, but it's within the city limits.
So, part of Offutt Air Force Base is in the city limits?
Part of what's contained in that shape right there. It, that's the city limits.
And it can be, we can annex the whole base if we want to.
But you said that you didn't.
Right.
But this is.
Oh, there's another portion of the base that is annexed, it's, we did. I can't talk about the, the agreement they came up with back when they annexed this, cuz I, I wasn't there, but. There's nothing wrong with annexing.
Okay, so what's the purpose of annexing the Bellevue property then?
Are you talking about the big piece that was annexed years ago?
No, I'm talking about, I'm sorry, I said Bellevue property, I, I apologize, I mean the Darling property. What's the purpose of annexing the Darling property?
It's to keep tho- that contiguous growth for Bellevue to reach those areas. I mean, you said in the letter, or somebody said in the letter that it was there since nineteen forty. And you said in your statement that it's always gonna be farmed as long as Darling owns that, which I can imagine could be the next two hundred years. So, if, if we didn't annex that area, how would we ever grow? How would we ever?
How does that help you grow? I mean, there's nothing there, you can't, it mean it can't be developed? It's wetlands, uh, it's not gonna be developed. All it does is, uh, I mean, are you looking to expand so you can annex?
I don't know that a property, I don't, that's part of it, I mean, the, the, getting down to the interchange we just talked about.
Why don't you just annex Normandy Hills now, with Darling?
Uh, we're annexing several subdivisions in our next package.
Okay. So the plan is to annex Darling property, so that you can expand beyond Darling property?
No, it's to set up for future growth, so the city has that means to. If, if we get a developer that wants to come in down along Highway thirty-four, for instance, the, or Kennedy and thirty-four. If we wanna bond sewer or, or water to get that down to that area. Can't bond it if it's not in the city, so we need to be ready and the city needs to grow properly and that's, that's the purpose.
So it's, the purpose is to annex Darling and then expand beyond Darling?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question. Anything else I can possibly answer for you?
Any questions for Mr. Eason?
Again, I think the, one of the biggest issues, uh, one of the large issues for us is the, uh, special green val- valuation for our farm property. Two hundred and twenty acres, not a huge amount of farm property as, as it, these days. But that's gonna be a, a very large increase in taxable liability for our company. And of course, we're gonna, uh, regulate everything we can to prevent that from happening. Um, along with, uh, maintenance issues that we're concerned about. And, uh, I think that's about all I'd, uh, like to say right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I would just remind you that, uh, the protest period ends June thirtieth, if you're going to protest that valuation. And, uh, make a difference, so keep that in mind if you're going to the Board of Equalization.
Yeah, if it's truly undevelopable ground, that needs to be brought up with the ass- county assessor, cuz they're the ones puts, puts the values on the property.
My name is Brian Fisher, I'm a partner at Cutac Rock, sixteen fifty Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Um, I represent Darling International and I authored the letter that, uh, was referenced, uh, that was provided today. Sorry, I got engaged in this matter, uh, late yesterday, so I've got this together to, uh, to put some thoughts together on this, uh, annexation. I'll be very brief, you can read my letter, I just asked the letter to be part of the record. And ultimately, I wanna just briefly state, I think Darling is willing to try to negotiate a resolution to this. And that's why I do ask for a thirty day layover, to have some discussions on this, because in reviewing the, the, the relevant case law and all of this. There are at least four grounds, um, any one of which I believe could, uh, could be a challenge, a valid challenge that would work. Uh, to stop this annexation completely, and I'm not sure the taxpayers above you need to pay for that. And I think we could work it out if we had some time. Um, you know, when it comes to the contiguous issue that was, uh, discussed. You know, uh, the, the real question is, uh, Court of Nebraska hasn't addressed whether the city can buy property, annex it. Because it's not gonna object to its own annexation and then use that to be contiguous, even though the whole section is separated. Uh, from the rest of the city, I think that's an open question, you know, of course, the city of Bellevue did try to annex the entire, uh, base back in nineteen seventy-one. And the U S District Court denied that. And, uh, there's also a question of whether you can have that big of a space between the city, uh, and the annexation package. And jump over that and be valid, I think that's another legal issue that I think is open question. Um, uh, in addition, if you look at particularly the part that's in, in, in number fourteen over there. That Darling, Darling, uh, owns a considerable portion of, it's a couple hundred acres, um, right there, that's not going to be developed. Some of it is in a lowland that is not suitable for development. Um, the real question is, if the ultimate goal is to get to the subdivision that's to the south. Um, you know, I believe it's, uh, 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 the Normandy Hills neighborhood, if that's the, that was stated as the reason. I think if that's the va- the reason for proceeding with the annexation, I think it's invalid under Nebraska law, I think you can't. You, you can't add in agricultural land to get to a subdivision, um, at least, at least, I think at least it's, it's up for legal discussion of whether you can. Um, and, uh, and there's some authority out there, uh, on that question. Um, and then the final thing I think really is, um, you know, eh, eh, there is a concern, we got a lot of trucks going on this road. And as outlined by the Darling representative, um, this is, you know, Sarpy County has the, the people and the facilities and. The city could make a deal to get that road continued to be maintained, the real issue is if the city has an ultimate plan to, to make a lot more traffic on that road. Um, i- it's a safety issue, uh, as, as well. And just wanted to state that for the record as well, because if that's the direction they're heading and they proceed with this annexation. Um, that's, that's something that, you know, Darling's been there a long time, they've been a great neighbor from what I've heard, I've investigated it, they've, uh. Uh, they've, they've, they've really been a, a good part of the community for many decades, or, or their predecessor has. And so, what I've just asked is a thirty day layover, allow us to sit down and talk about it, see if there's a resolution that would allow. The city to do what we, it wants to do and preserve, uh, what Darling would like to do, or would like to preserve, uh, in, in its interests. And then save people a lot of trouble, so that, that would be the proposal and I'll be happy to, to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Mayor Hyke, members of the Bellevue City Council, my name's Jim Lang, I'm an attorney, eighty-five twenty-six F Street, uh. Omaha, Nebraska, I represent Frank Creachy, Mr. Creachy is the owner of a fifty-five acre parcel of land at the southeast. Uh, Fairview Road and Fort Crook Road. Uh, this land is, uh, agricultural land, it's farmed, there's no structures, no one lives there, it's not contiguous, we've heard the contiguous arguments and. Uh, but it's not contiguous and it's also agricultural land and under section, uh, sixteen one thirty. For the city to annex, it has to be agricultural, it cannot be agricultural, it's gotta be urban or suburban in nature and contiguous. So we've heard those arguments and, uh, we believe they're valid in this case as well. The, uh, Planning Commission in this case, after a public hearing, decided that this was agricultural land, it was subject to green bill. And recommended against the annexation, and they did so for a very good reason, taking away the green bill. Taking away the green belt greatly affects the ability to farm in a profitable manner when you have to pay the additional tax from the valuation that you lose when you go into the city and you lose the green belt. This property is valued at about five thousand dollars an acre right now with ag. It'll probably go up to, to the market value of maybe twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand, whatever the market value is at this point. So, there'll be a tremendous increase. Uh, secondly, you know, we talked about development. Uh, Frank Crecci is a developer. He's one of the larger developers over the period of time, Mr. Hyke knows this, in the Omaha area. Frank owns this property. Uh, once the property matures, he'll look at developing the property to the south. Uh, when you develop the property, you like to at least have the option of looking at a sanitary improvement district. If you're in the city, you cannot have a SID. You take away one of the developer's tools. So, if the city's looking at development, they need to look at how developers look at the property and how developers develop. And one of the tools developers want to look at is using a sanitary improvement district. Now, they also like to cooperate with the city. If the city wants to come in and put in improvements, they'll certainly look at that at that time. And at that time, if that's the most feasible for both the city and the developer, the parcel can be, uh, annexed at that time. So, what we're asking is, number one, is not to annex this parcel, because right now, it's agricultural, it's not contiguous, number one. Number two, we're going to lose the green belt property. And number three, it will make it more difficult for Mr. Crecci to develop this, once this area matures. Right now, the area is not really mature for development. Frank would like to go ahead and do something, it's just not there quite yet. But it will be there in the future, because Bellevue eventually will move in this direction. Annexation's a valuable tool for the city, uh, and it's, uh, it's, uh, that, a tool that the city needs to use in a responsible fashion. Uh, I represented, uh, Blackhawk, it came through the city council here two months ago. I commend the city greatly for working with us on that. That's a great annexation, good for the city, and good for the, uh, residents of Blackhawk. This annexation of this property is premature, and what we're asking you to do is not annex this property at this time and work with us. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions, Mr. Lang?
Yep.
Councilwoman Welch?
Um, Mr. Lang, um, I also talked with Mr. Crecci about a opportunity on this land for residential, and, and my understanding is, his opinion, this land is not set up for residential, it would be set up for industrial, um, that type of thing. So, part of that going into an SID would become a mute point if this thing is set up for industrial. Am I correct on that?
No, that's not correct. We use, um, Councilman Welch, we use SIDs for all different types of properties. Uh, Syntec Park, uh, SID one seventy-two Sarpy, that's an SID, uh, has the Budweiser plant there, Budweiser facility. So we use SIDs for, uh, residential, commercial, and industrial.
Okay.
And mixed-use developments as well. And once again, there's a, you know, we don't have a lot of development tools. The SID is one of our main tools, and it works very well, especially when you have a developer like Mr. Crecci who's done a lot of them.
And I under, understand that, but how do cities that don't have SIDs develop? How do they do the economic development without SIDs? Because I, from what I understand...
Some of them...
It's pretty well, um, in our area, SIDs.
Yes.
But as you know, there's a lot of cities and towns outside of the Omaha-Bellevue area that develop that don't have SIDs.
I think those cities that don't have a development tool like an SID do not develop very well. If you look at the Omaha metropolitan area and the subdivisions, we have, uh, everything west of Seventy-Second Street, a lot of areas in Bellevue, uh, Blackhawk, which is a beautiful subdivision, uh, a real asset to the city, those have all been SIDs. If you look at a city, uh, I'll give you an example. SIDs pretty much are used in Douglas and Sarpy County, because we're the only area in the city that has enough rapid growth to support an SID. For an SID to be successful, it has to have a reasonable amount of growth during a reasonable time, otherwise, it just can't support itself. A, a good example, I think, of a city that doesn't use SIDs is the city of Lincoln, Nebraska. If you compare the city of Lincoln, Nebraska to the type of subdivisions and improvements, street improvements, that we have in this particular metropolitan area, there is no comparison. And one of the reasons we're so successful here is because we use SIDs in a responsible manner. You have subdivision agreements that control the SID, control the spending. But I think if you can, if you really, if you really look at the two cities, the transportation systems, uh, the subdivisions, the type of public improvements we put in with SIDs, which are upgraded improvements, upgraded sewers, interceptor sewers, uh, it's a great tool, and it's one that is, that we really benefited here. Now, to a large extent, Omaha area, the metropolitan area here with Bellevue, probably, is probably the one of the only areas in the state of Nebraska that SIDs can function properly, because we're the only area that has, has growth, or enough growth to support the SID. So, it's a good tool, uh, if used in a responsible way, and we do it through subdivision agreements with the city, as you know. And, uh, Mr. Crecci, uh, he's a developer, and once this property matures, he would like to go forward with it. But it probably would be not a residential subdivision because its location, it'd probably be more of a, um, light industrial-commercial area.
Okay.
And I think that's correct there.
Thank you.
And you know, um, you can always de-annex.
We know that.
Coming into a city.
You can...
Um, so, I mean, really, it comes, it, it is a, a financial hit. But looking at Bellevue's future growth, and trying to set up the remaining little bit of amount of remaining areas we have to grow into, um, how would you represent, if you were representing us getting water and sewer, bondable, a bondable project down to Thirty-four and the interchange, and getting that to develop correctly? You can't do it without being in the city, correct?
No, you can use, uh, uh, you can be in the city and, but the problem with being in the city, then the city's got to extend the water and sewer lines, and they have to pay for the water and sewer lines. Uh, with the SID system, you could do interlocal agreements where the SID participates in the payment of extending those lines. An example is, is right here in the city of Omaha, our interceptor sewer systems. When the city of Omaha, we have an interceptor sewer system, as you know, where when you ha, pay a building fee, part of that fee goes into the interceptor sewer, so we can extend our sewers. So, under the interceptor sewer program, uh, we just, the SID, a lot of times, goes ahead and extends and pays for the extension of the interceptor sewer, and then the interceptor sewer fund reimburses the SID. That way, the city of Omaha or the other cities don't use their bonding capacity to support these new subdivisions, you know, uh, and, and the expense of extending these sewers. That's the beauty of an SID, the city can use them, but they're not using their bond authority to use them. The SID has their own bonding authority, that they can enter into an interlocal agreement with the city and extend those sewers in a partnership fashion. So there's a lot of benefits that, uh, as you know, that, uh, and a lot of flexibility that you, that we have with these SIDs, and, and they've been a great asset for not only this area, like Blackhawk, I mean, what a beautiful subdivision, uh, and a lot of areas, uh, within the city of Omaha. You know, West Roads, uh, you know, Chopping Center was an SID at one time.
And some haven't done so well.
Uh, you know, I agree, some haven't done so well, and that's, a, a lot of that's been addressed through subdivision agreements. Um, and, uh, uh, but Mr. Crecci's subdivision, he has not had one that has gone bad. They've all been annexed. Uh, uh, the outlet mall was, was an SID at one time. It did get annexed by the, uh, by the city, because, because we needed to get TIF out of that, but Mr. Crecci developed that. So he's a very responsible developer and, and a good developer to have in this area. But right now, we'd like to, you know, we'd like to just, uh, work with the city and not have the city, follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and not have the city annex this parcel at this time, and let's wait until it gets mature enough, and look at it at that time, and look at a development scheme for that particular property, which is not that far away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dar...
We do appreciate, uh, Mr. Crecci's investment, Darling's investment, and, uh, everybody's investment in our communities.
And we appreciate what the, what the, uh, city council and the mayor and the city's going through with this. Once again, annexation's a positive thing, but, uh...
Thank you.
On this one, we think, uh, it's a little mature, premature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Area Nine?
I know I'm taking up your time. Uh, Michael Wills, thirteen twenty-one Harrison, here in Bellevue. Um, I want you to think back at, uh, three seventy, the, uh, southeast corner of three seventy and Seventy-Second Street. A few years ago, and I'm talking off the top of my head, I don't know, but I remember that it got annexed, it was a green belt, I think. They kept farming it, and every year, the county said, "Well, you're not, you're not a green belt anymore, you're, you're, you..." So you're going to have to get, um, taxed at a higher rate. And they fought that for three or five years, and they finally gave up, and there's a gas station there, uh, you know, donut shop, a couple of doctor's offices in that area, and the rest of it looks trashy. Uh, what I'm afraid of is when you go ahead and annex all these green belts that these people have been talking about, the county's going to do the same thing. They're going to tax these people to a point where, if I have a seventy-five acre farm, I'm going to have to sell it, uh, to Krispy Kreme or somebody, uh, because I can't afford it. I don't know. Uh, again, I'm just talking off the top of my head, and it's something that I think the, uh, council should look at before they jump off into the deep end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Well, again, Matt Ramsey, eight two two Bordeaux Avenue. Reading them from my prepared notes, thank you. Uh, agricultural land deemed as urban or suburban in character, on annexation authority, Nebraska revised statute sixteen, one thirty-two states, such grant of power shall not be construed or as conferring power upon the mayor and city council to extend the limits of a city over any agricultural lands which are rural in character. Reviewing Nebraska Supreme Court opinions, it is clear that the courts have shown great deference to the annexing cities' classification of the character of the land being annexed. However, there are typically three tests used by the court to confirm the classification as being proper. First, is the land being used for agricultural purposes? An affirmative answer to this question is typically not sufficient to deem the land as rural in character. Second, is the land sufficiently covered in dwellings that it has lost its rural character? And finally, had the land been planted, platted, excuse me. If the land is unplanted and passes the first two tests, then the courts have concluded that land is rural in character, and the city does not have authority to extend its boundary, and this is from Wagner versus City of Omaha. All the green belt lots, lots in this package pass through three tests and should not be included in the annex package. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Okay, um, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Um, obviously, we disagree on a few subjects this evening. However, I do want to thank you, um, for your forward vision. Um, for many years, probably too many years, Bellevue has been a military city. For many years, that philosophy of governance has worked well, not so much the last ten. Um, moving forward to strive to be, you know, not just a city of the first class, but a first-class city that happens to have a military base associated with it, is, uh, I really feel is the right direction to go, so, uh, thank you for your leadership in this aspect.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I just wanted to say thank you for the case law and your time and research that you presented today. We will take the opportunity to review that, uh, present that to the council prior to the vote on, um, Thursday, but I do appreciate your time and effort and all that research and thoughtfulness coming in here, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else wishing to speak on Area Nine annexation?
Go ahead, go ahead, Doc.
Go, you got a question for him?
No, I just a comment.
Can I? I'm going to close the public hearing, seeing nobody come forward, and Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and I too appreciate the citation of case law and, uh, state statute. It has been instructive, even though people wonder, is this a done deal and why am I even bothering? There are questions that have been raised, and we will check on those. Other questions that have been raised, have been raised and sent to us, and our legal counsel and our planning department and Planning Commission have addressed those for us. So we have had some answers from questions raised in between the meetings and at the Planning Commission meeting. So, the public is engaged in it, and that's why the state has a set process for us to follow. And I think we're doing our best to follow that process. And as our legal counsel aptly said, we will be answering and asking more questions in between. So, what you have brought to us has been helpful and is instructive, and we are listening. Maybe we're not hearing everything, but we're hearing much of it, and we will get some answers. So, thank you very much, and I do appreciate all the information we've already gotten from our legal counsel and our planning commission that the public hasn't even seen or isn't aware, and that the mayor has provided and administrator to address these things over at least a month and probably two months, as this process has all unfolded. So it isn't just happening tonight at a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
I also want to state that I know a lot of the, um, people have come forward and talked about the county does a great job on your streets and everything, and I will repeat this again, because I've said this before, I would put our public works and our public safety departments up against anyone in the county. They are top-notch, and once the annexation goes through, that is determined that needs to go through, I want you to come back, if you are annexed, in a year, and tell me that it's better, because I will guarantee you, they work hard and they do a great job.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would just close with, uh, we are trying to help the city of Bellevue, we're not trying to hurt you. So our, our intentions are to do what's best for, for Bellevue and our growth, so... With that, we will move on to twelve E. Oops, I'm sorry, reminded by the attorney, third reading for Area Number Nine will be this Thursday, June sixth, two thousand nineteen, at six PM in these council chambers. With that, I'll move on to twelve E. Ordinance number three nine four nine, request to amend Section nineteen dash forty-two of the Bellevue Code pertaining to the publication of a general notice of the requirements of Article Four of Chapter nineteen regarding wrecked, junked, or dismantled vehicles, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
I would move to approve ordinance three nine four nine, publicly.
Sorry.
Oh.
Second reading, so we're, we're going to open it for public hearing. If there's anybody here to speak in favor of or against ordinance number three nine four nine, please come forward now. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and, uh... Any questions from the council? We need a motion? Uh, just third rea, okay, third reading will be June eighth. Is that correct? June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six PM. Moving on to twelve F. Ordinance number three nine five zero, request to amend Section nineteen dash twenty-three of the Bellevue Code pertaining to the publication of general notice of the requirements of Article Three of Chapter nineteen regarding litter and noxious weeds, to provide an effective date of this ordinance. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak for or against ordinance number three nine five zero?
Michael Wills, thirteen twenty-one Harrison Street, here in Bellevue. About seventeen years ago, I had a, um, gentleman come to my property and told me I had noxious weeds, and he wanted them out of there, uh, code enforcement. And I said, "They're not noxious." He said, "I'm the boss," basically. Well, I went to the city, uh, to the, uh, Secretary for Code Enforcement, and I explained that those, what was being... And I explained that those, what was being called noxious weeds were actually ornamental grass. She understood that. And what I'm trying to get to is seventeen years later, there is a, now a system going to be in place for both cars and noxious weeds that somebody that, and please excuse the way I put this, but I had two hours of pictures being thrown up on a wall saying, now you know what a noxious weed looks like. I think this is a good change. I really do. Now, I want to go back. I didn't want to talk for both of them. But I've called code enforcement a number of times on a business on railroad. They go down. They move the cars. I mean, the place has just got junk cars all over the place. They say, well, we're an electrical company, but they're, they're driving over the property next door. They've got junk cars all over the place. I think it's a chop shop myself. And they'll clean up their idea for a, a week or two and then the cars are right back there again. And they need to have some follow-up. Drive by them once in a while, say, oh, hey, you got your cars back there? You're driving over the property that you don't own and that doesn't have a street and you're just tearing up the, the land there. I don't own that land, you know, and the people who do should say something, but I don't think they live in the city. I don't think they live. Mr. Marco used to own the property and he passed on and his kids own it now and I don't think they live anywhere in the area. They must get the lawn mowed. But I think it's the city's responsibility to go by and say, hi, you moved the cars back over again, get them back off. Anyway, I think this is, both of these are good changes. That, and I'm sorry that we, city administrator gets stuck with that appeals process, but it is an appeals process that we've needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number three nine five zero? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the council? Okay, the third reading will be June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at six P M. Typo, two thousand nineteen. All right, sorry, I got to find my place. Okay, Sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the state MOU agreement with the state of Nebraska? Any discussion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item sixteen B.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Sixteen C, approve of change order number two for the two thousand nineteen C D B G paving improvements east of Chandler Hills Project. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve item sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Any questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approval of the purchase of a tandem axle dump truck and a single axle muni body dump truck for the street departments as a result of the two thousand nineteen annexation. I called this one. On this particular item, this is an unfunded item. All right. So I'm going to make a motion that we grant ordering authority for the purchase of this vehicle with specific, vehicles with specific instructions that they be included in the budget for next year and paid with funds from next year. The reason that this is happening right now is that the lead time for ordering the vehicles. Make the motion and then we'll talk. I did. Second. Oh, okay. Second the motion.
What's the motion?
The motion is to grant ordering authority so that they can place the order for the vehicles now with the understanding that these have to be in next year's budget and paid for with next year's funds. Just second it and I'll explain it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook. Now discussion. All right. The lead time is so long to get these vehicles, okay, that we have to order them now. But they're not budgeted in this year's budget and there's not room for them in this year's budget. So we're just granting ordering authority at this point. So they're going to place the order. They'll include them in next year's budget. We'll pay for them with money for next year's budget. But that's all we're granting at this time. So we're approving the ordering.
Mr. Roberts, is that true?
Yeah, what we do is we get these ordered. We never pay for them until after we have them in our possession. But what it takes is about seven months to get the chassis built with the lead time and another two, two months to put all the, the features on it. You know, the flashes and tow hook or for the blade, the plows, you know, all that kind of stuff. And so it's going to be probably February before we even see them. So it will have to be in next year's budget.
Councilman Stenson?
So they don't require any money to be put down?
No.
To hold these or anything?
No.
So is it just a matter of terminology that I'm trying to understand that we're amending this? I mean, we're not purchasing it. We're approving the order to be able to purchase it, to put it into next year's budget? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, it's terminology. We're, we're not violating our budget by spending money we don't have right now, okay? The purchase would violate the budget. So we're granting ordering authority with an understanding that it goes into next year's budget and will be paid for next year. We know it is. He's just being very careful. Okay, motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Those are all in your packets. So we will accept those. Moves on to item number eighteen. Okay. Question on administrative reports. Jim, where are we at on flood preparations for the oncoming water? I mean, we're all watching the water rise. I mean, we've got, what is it, seventy-five CFS coming at us right now, which is what, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day? Second.
That's per second, seventy-five thousand cubic feet per second.
Right, I'm converting it. Okay, it's, it's times, it's, it's times seven point four nine, isn't it? Seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day.
So I'm not a high.
Yeah.
With the extra water.
It's a lot of water coming at us, okay? So where are we at with the preparations? I mean, what subdivisions are we, you know, getting ready? I mean, what roads are we getting ready? I mean, who needs to, who needs to get prepared? I mean, you know.
We, yesterday, we, we had the mayor re-sign and amended declaration for our emergency to extend it. So as, to make sure that if there's any further damage or issues that come with it, that we have the ability to mitigate that also in addition to what's happened in the past. So we've, we've amended our emergency action. We met last week. We're on a guarded eye just to watch what happens right now. Our, the biggest concern is what's going on in the Missouri River. I think last Thursday, it was up, I think it was three feet and it's going to stay at that. With the release being at the seventy-five thousand cubic feet per second, we're pretty close to where the levee's limit is here as far as if additional water comes out or rain. Rain is actually our biggest concern right now. It's not our friend. So we're on guarded eye to watch what happens along the Missouri. You've seen Hayworth. Hayworth is back at full tilt. That does not look like that's going to go down all summer. So it's, let's, we're watching what happens. Our biggest concern is if it comes around the backside of Three Seventy, which right now it doesn't look like it. When I say Three Seventy, the bridge going down towards Hayworth, that would be a large concern for us is if it starts to head down towards the industrial area again, like it did in the March flood. But it's, the levees are our, our largest concern. We also have an issue with Paradise Lakes. We're pumping out of the, the Paradise Lakes into the Brown River. The Brown River, we're pumping into the Missouri, but the Brown and the Missouri are at the same level. So we don't have our gates open. This is just becoming circular. We have a lot of groundwater that as we're pumping, the groundwater is raising. So it's, it's fighting a slow battle here and rain is the only thing that's really going to put us at the worst risk right now for that situation, but because it's at the bottom of the drain. We are watching the Missouri River with a guarded eye. What they're telling us is it's not going to be at two thousand elevens point yet. But there's a lot of rainfall to the north. There's a lot of snow melt that, that's why they're discharging at the rate they are now. And I think we're going to stay at this discharge rate from now till, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're here in September, October before that slows down.
This is going to go into late fall before they start, start decreasing it.
So it's just, it's.
Open for suggestions.
Yeah. Somebody asked the other day, is there a higher order that could make decisions? Can't we drill a hole and just fill the aquifer? We know who to reach out to here, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilman Cook, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that I move that the city council go into closed session at this time for protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session shall be for property negotiations. The following individuals will be included in closed session. City Administrator Jim Risto, Mayor Rusty Hike, council members, city council members, Attorney Bree Roberts, paralegal Tony King, Public Works Director Jeff Roberts, I said that wrong, and Finance Director Rich Severson. Tony.
Do you have a second? Motion by Cook, seconded by Shannon. Please vote to go into closed session.
All voted yes.
It is eight twenty-one. The city council has voted to go into closed session at this time. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session shall be property negotiations. The following individuals will be included in closed session. City Administrator Jim Risto, Mayor Rusty Hike, city council members, Attorney Bree Roberts, Bree Robbins, paralegal Tony King, Public Works Director Jeff Roberts, and Financial Director Rich Severson.